Right on, okay. Hi Catherine. All right, we're calling a planning board, oops, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, seven o'clock, um, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, calling a planning board meeting here to order in Grafton, New York. Um, got, uh, let's just go around and see who we all are, Angus Forman.
That was Floyd.
There's Jake Vogel. And Rich Angel.
You guys wanna just say to me?
Everyone.
That's the, yeah.
Monica.
Thomas Smith, Lance Fair.
Arthur Stewart.
Nice work, Maria. Uh, and we've got Catherine, Mo Hallam, and Russell Boyer.
Paula Meehan.
All right, um, then we're gonna take an opportunity to look at the minutes from March twenty-third and see if we have anything we need to adjust. Hey, then entertain a motion if anyone likes these.
Motion to accept the minutes as is.
Uh, seconded?
Yes, seconded.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Right, okay. Um, I don't know if we got any correspondence in the mailbox. Uh, apologies ahead of time if anyone had any urgent business, uh, but we will make sure to have that stuff ready for the May meeting if there is anything. I haven't heard about it, right? Um, uh, maybe we can take a quick minute to ask Alice if you encountered anything worth mentioning with the, uh, Upper Valley Lake Sonicke Planning Commission thing?
Yeah.
If there's anything you wanted to share or noteworthy.
Well, they want to address the Upper Valley housing crisis, and it gets several suggestions on how to do it. They want to form a group to help, um, planning boards in the area with their, um, constituencies to do, um, like paperwork, um, where to go for permits and things like that. Uh, it's all stuff that we do pretty much, and I think we do a good job of it. The thing that really, um, got my attention, so looking for donations of five hundred to five thousand dollars, which is way out of our budget. I mean, it sounds like a worthwhile cause, but I don't think we're in a position to, to join this group at this time.
I don't have a problem entertaining getting involved if we get organized in a way where it would actually be practical or helpful.
Well, they're gonna have a, they're gonna be putting up a website with more information. They're gonna have, you know, the form on twenty-sixth, like, it doesn't say where.
Yeah, maybe there's an online option to observe it, I don't know.
I can look into that.
If you're interested, uh, definitely, absolutely doesn't hurt to learn more.
Some of the things that we addressed, things like asking people to take their large, single-family homes and turn them into duplexes. Many houses, you know, things all down.
Yeah.
So, that's what I call it.
It, it, it's kinda hard to determine with a group like that exactly how fully relevant, like a very far away from everything town like Grafton is, like, I don't know if that, I don't know, I mean, most people who get a job in Hanover or Hitchcock or New London or something, Concord, might just wanna live a little closer. I mean, there's obviously a lot of people who live here commute to those places, but it, it, I don't know, seems a little, a little unfamiliar to do duplexes in Grafton.
No, I was, I was only, I was just gonna put a duplex in Grafton, so.
I mean, and, and it seems like if people want it, they already will have. Plenty of people are capable of doing an in-law apartment that they could rent to somebody or.
Well, I thought it was a good idea, but not for us.
Well, there are a lot of farmhouses that were intended to have like twelve people, and there's like one or two people living there. I mean, so, well, they could always, I don't know. All right, anyone just thinking about that or? Great, thanks for, thanks for looking that over. Uh, well, let's take a look at the subdivision. Come on up and you can share, um.
Well, Tom Smith, Lance Fair, I'm, uh, here in place of Eric, who was here, my business partner last week. He's on vacation, or last month, he's on vacation this week, so bear with me. This was his project, I'm gonna kinda add a little bit of, yeah.
Well, you take a plan, so.
Absolutely, yeah. And I take these are, those are quite delicate paper copies.
They are, has anything changed?
No.
Right on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, I can, uh, do a quick overview for anybody that, uh, hasn't seen this.
Right, I mean, I think, you know, we were here.
I didn't say, I didn't know if anybody in the public, uh, you know, hasn't been familiar with it, but, um.
Yeah, Monica, if you're curious and, I mean, you're the, you're a neighbor, you're just, you know, you're welcome to come up and take a look or.
We got the Tom Kevich property here on, uh, it's between Razor Hill Road and Tunnel Road. Let's see, we got, you know, roughly around twenty acres, over twenty acres here in size. Looking into a subdivision here, there's an existing house, you know, settlement area right there, that they want to, uh, turn that just into a five-acre lot and then have, you know, just about a fifteen-acre lot for the rest of it, uh, undeveloped at this point in time. This, the separation line, there's a power line that runs through the property, and that's what we, uh, that's what we're proposing to hold for a new property line. Easy to see, it was fabulous. Yeah, I know, we were playing around with this like a computer trying to figure out acres, and I said, hey, I said, just for giggles, I said, what would it be if we popped that line on there and put it right at five point zero four? Like, that's perfect.
Yeah, 'cause then you don't need to.
You know, a nice perimeter boundary right there, uh, the setbacks, you know, you know, there's already gonna be, you know.
No one else would go hunting for pins under decades of time.
Exactly, so that's why we held that, it just fell right in a perfect spot. You know, it doesn't create any setback issues with existing structures or anything. We have plenty of road frontage on both roads still for both lots, and the fifty-acre lot, you know, has frontage on both roads still, so, um, this frontage up here, obviously far better than down here 'cause we do have a wetland area there, but there is room to get in there, you know, if they're, uh.
Right, it's wide pretty quick, too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Not a big deal, but like, it's, you know, it's not like it's some skee- little thing forever.
It's quite wide through that area.
Yeah, so, that, that's, that's the penny tour of the point, so I'd be, I'd be more than willing to answer any questions.
Man, I don't, I don't see anything that's alarming or otherwise unreasonable here. Yeah.
No Dollar General jet or anything like that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a very good story. We're going, we're on this property, so.
Yeah, oh, nice, nice.
Okay. Good enough. Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not exactly the most organized at the moment, but, um, we have the application here. I thought that we had put a couple of random dates down on the application. Yeah, there they are.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, so we're just, um. Tell, tell me your name one more time.
Uh, Thomas Smith.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna add you to the posse soul.
Yep. And just the other fifty percent part right there, so.
Okay, um. Yeah, I don't think there's any exceptions, it's a minor subdivision because we have acres, uh, more than five acres, less than three lot, or three lots or less, and, uh, more than two hundred feet of road frontage. We don't have to go through the extra steps. Even if we did, I don't think there's anything to worry about. Right, this June date was in case we decided not to act. We, uh, you'd get an automatic yes if we chose not to say yes. But butters notified, public hearing is tonight. The public hearing notices were put in the Valley News for seventy dollars, which I thought was a lot.
I know.
I've seen between like ten or fifteen and like, I think there was one that was like fifty bucks one time.
I question how many people read the paper already, Maury, you know.
I mean, I honestly, I kinda feel like it's, uh, RSA is due for revision for the digital age because, you know, a lot more people are gonna learn about this, you know, on some sort of social media or some sort of like town thing than, I mean, sure, like, I get the Valley News headlines, but I don't subscribe to it, so I never really read any of the, like, the little details. Okay, um, right, no need for site evaluation, um. Okay, and then, uh, we need to figure out, uh, who is paying and how. Have you heard anything about that?
I haven't heard anything about that, so.
Okay, all right.
But, uh, I guess if you came up with a, uh, with a fee schedule there or something, I could make sure to relay that information or.
Eric knows about it.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll have him convey that.
Yeah.
I mean, if you decline and have them get you a check or?
Sure.
Um, yeah, I mean, we'll be able to stay in touch about that.
Yeah.
Um, it's somewhat in the tune of a hundred and thirty-something dollars total, it's.
Pretty typical, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um, okay, I, I, I think that we, we can, we're gonna approve this conditional to getting payment and.
Perfect.
I think that it'll, it'll work out nicely. All right, and then.
I don't like good forms, they just paid us off, so if wrong work we did, so.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a reasonable point, is that you've been paid, so we don't have any reason to hold anything over anyone's head.
And it just came in the mail, maybe they had mailed it already and the sudden got here out of hand.
I can't remember if, if, Eric seemed to have suggested they were going to send a check, and I made a point that they'll need to make one check to the town.
Right.
If he wanted to pay, he could write.
Maybe it's in the planning board box.
But honestly, that's, no, that's, we'll, we'll, we'll figure that one right out.
No, we didn't have the fees for that.
Well, I emailed them.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I've been, I've been in touch with them about what, what it's gonna be, 'cause I sent off the Valley News article and it was like seventy bucks for one day and classified, a little blurred. They gotta, they gotta stay alive, I guess, 'cause everyone else is just doing like I do, like, read the tiny little thing underneath, but this is your last.
Yeah, you can't.
It's the rest of your awesome Facebook.
Right, 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 okay, um. Any concerns, questions about this? Okay, uh, it's, uh, seven fourteen, like to open a public hearing. For minor subdivision. Uh, we just went over all of it, uh, you've got the pronunciation of their name correct, I.
Uh, that's only 'cause Eric told me what it was, he goes, it doesn't sound like.
No, no, I'm gonna start off, so what, tell me.
Uh, Tom Kevich.
Tom Kevich, that's right, so Ernest and Christina Tom Kevich on sixty-one Tunnel Road. Is there anything that anybody is curious about in the public, like to comment or any concerns? Well, that's a.
I don't remember.
Pretty obvious, I think. All right. What, what are the bad ones?
You keep me out of line, the Hampshire has to be the worst. I love, I love the town, it's beautiful, but I don't do subdivisions there.
There's a lot of people looking to give somebody a hard time.
Or it's consistent with suits and ties and, uh, lawyers and, yeah.
What are their plans for the subdivision?
Uh, I believe, uh, I believe selling one or both, I'm not, I'd be honest with you, I'm not fully sure, but I, I, I believe it's to, you know, for a sale purpose or possible down the road, yeah. But I haven't heard anything.
You know the track or you don't?
Eric had mentioned he thought they were trying to sell the house, but, and keep the land. But I, I don't know that for a fact, you know, I haven't talked to them about it, but, yeah.
Yeah. All right, um, yeah, well, that's a pretty good public hearing right there. Let's close that up and, uh, um, I would entertain a motion to somebody on the board to accept this as presented.
Motion to accept.
Okay, keep that up, we gotta do some doodling.
Oh, you're, oh, okay, you're, sorry.
Perfect.
Motion to accept the application as it's been presented.
And then the subdivision is presented?
I'm sorry, yes, and the subdivision as presented.
Any seconds?
One second.
All right, and all in favor? All right, okay. That's great.
And I'll, I'll just mention to Eric or whoever that it won't be recorded until, uh, fee, uh, fees are received.
Yeah, I think we'll, I'll be in touch, I can probably make the call or email tomorrow or stop by the office and make sure, 'cause it, it's probably what happens, probably in our box.
Yeah.
Is that, that's actually a sharpie?
It's a Sharpie, kind of.
That's incredible. Okay, great, um, is there a line on page? Right up there, we go, okay, cool. All right. I think we just need one signature, I think that line's just there in case somebody.
Which area is it?
Right on, uh, this, this is yours? All right, cool, all right, and then, um, I guess we may as well, I can't remember how many copies we like to have, sure. We like one in the, in the planning board folder and Brian would like to have one to keep, so I was gonna do the same thing so that there's a. Okay. Okay, application received. We just received the application on the third March. And we officially accepted it on the twenty-seventh of April. On time. All right.
Awesome.
Yeah, well said.
Hey, thank you all very much.
Yeah.
Great to see you.
Good to.
Thank you.
All right, uh. More, any other business that the board feels like dealing with tonight? I keep threatening to talk more about the subdivision regs, and I would like to do that. Um, maybe we'll do it on a night when we don't have any less occupied attention and, uh, and some preparation, so. Okay, Russell, anything you wanna share about what's been happening in this left board?
It's really nothing pertaining to any of this, I don't think. Unless you wanna know that town's getting a highway truck right back.
Yeah, no, that kind of stuff is super out of. No, it's all about, uh, you know, Steve Darrow was all about interdepartment communication when he was.
Executive.
And it's like, it doesn't really matter if it's anyone's business or not, because we all, we all live here and it's just, it, it like, try to look at it a little less in like a nosy, busybody way and more about just like a being informed so we can offer insect or things or just, you know, kinda stay in the loop of it, like, so. New rig.
Do they have RSA, um, certain RSAs in New Hampshire for the subdivision regulations?
Absolutely, um.
You know, I'll talk you ahead, like, what?
Six seventy-six.
Four.
Four, six seventy-six, four, that's the board.
It's the first thing in your notebook, Russell.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the, it's the board's procedure on class and, you know, the, the unfortunate reality, or maybe we can just consider ourselves fortunate, is that this, like, tome that they give to the planning board, everything is just like, so much of it, it's, in this day, is not relevant. Ernie, hey.
Oh, hey.
How's it going? Right on. You, uh, we just approved your subdivision.
Oh. So I didn't even need to come down, I could just go home.
Didn't, have you, have you written a check to the town?
Um, no, but I, I don't have a check on me, but I have cash for whatever fees and all that.
Right, it's a hundred and, um, I think, um, I don't know if I would be advised to take cash.
I can send you guys a check tomorrow.
Um, if you wanna just drop one at the town office.
I can put it in the mail tomorrow.
Sure.
Um, if I'm not in town, I know I'm gonna be in, I don't know if I'll be here when they open up, so.
No, that's totally fine, um, uh, don't rush it, if it's gotta be early next week, that's fine. Let me, uh, let me see if I'm able to get to a different part of this while I'm still recording, you know, be reminded about what the fee schedule is here.
So is the guy out there on the porch, the guy, the, the one home, the thing there?
Yeah, that's Eric's coworker.
I'll catch him before he leaves.
Hundred and thirty-three dollars to the town of Grafton.
That's it, one check?
That's it, yeah, yeah, 'cause Haverhill doesn't take personal checks.
Okay.
So with the surveyor not writing the check, um, we'll just, the town will just do all the checks.
Okay.
So all you gotta do is a hundred and thirty-three dollars to Grafton, and, uh, I'll check with Sarah Hoag, you know, midweek, that she's got it, and then we'll send this right out.
All right, that works.
Thanks, Ernie.
All right, you guys have a good night.
You too. Nice. Yeah, basically, this huge book that they give is like, probably unfortunately relevant to like Nashua, Manchester, seacoast, and like, probably a little less and less and less as you get to smaller populations, and very, very little of it without, um, without zoning, without, um, heavy, breathe-down-your-neck stuff, but it's pretty minimal, it's basically just some state law on how do I go about subdivisions, um, and to make sure that the, that everyone who's involved is effectively forced into a communication channel at the same time, so no one makes any mistakes, and people who have legitimate concerns can bring them up at the right time. That's about it.
Just asking, I'll try and speak myself with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
legislature have you or?
Yeah, uh, the, the, the way it's set up, it really doesn't, doesn't look like that's, it, it's just like one more RSA in this big, huge book, but it really isn't, it's the most relevant to the way we're doing stuff here. Yeah, all right, um, any other left board stuff worth mentioning?
There's, it's pretty dry in this office right now, so here's not a lot.
That's great, that's nice to hear. All right, uh, anyone out in public have anything to share?
I came down.
Yeah.
To inquire whether you're ever going to do anything about updating the master plan.
We would love to, um, so, um, I don't think there's anybody here who doesn't want to. I, I, I still think that prioritizing the, um, review and the pertinent public hearings for, um, for re, um, revising the subdivision regulations and the applications for our subdivisions is a priority, which barring any, any business or unnecessary drama next month, um, I think we could very easily tackle. When that is clear, um, I don't have any problem setting it aside, saying, good to go for another decade or however long, and let's like, look at the master plan. It's from the eighties, I know, I was bored when it came out or something like that, so it's, uh, eighties? It's from eighty-seven, I think.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, yeah, yeah, um. No, I, I, um, I've definitely come around to the, uh, the conceptual value. At first, I felt like it was something that was just straight out of a dystopian sci-fi novel. And I, now I recognize that it's actually something of value and that we don't have to be afraid of it, we don't have to feel like we're going to be persecuted by it or limited by it, it's a tool for looking at the future and, um, making educated decisions on how to go about things. So I'm, I'm on your side with that, we'd like to do it soon.
Is it something that this board does, or is it something that this board can have other people do?
Correct, it, it's either, and, um, I might be being too stubborn, I'm under the impression that we can pull it off, but it may not be realistic, if we can't pull it off, we need to crank up the budget to pay somebody else to do it. I can go, I mean, we can have a constructive debate on how much we should spend and what the value will be. Membership in the Upper Valley Lake Sonicke Planning Commission would provide a lot of those services. And I think it's, well, they have donations, but I think the membership is two thousand a year. It's ten times what the planning board budget has been in recent years. It's also a tiny fraction of what a lot of the other departments in town do. I think having an updated master plan would provide a lot for, um, just.
You could justify a part of each of the one point in the budget.
I mean, that, that served my option, I mean, I'm, I've been, I, I've been really proud of trying to keep the volunteer thing going here, but, I mean, I got involved in this before I was a parent and it's, you know, before I was self-employed and it's like, you know, time is something that I value a lot more than I used to, and maybe it is appropriate to, um.
So, there's potentially some more, um, funding coming to the town, like ARCA money or something like that? Would it be smart for me to ask, if you're Mark, a couple of thousand dollars for?
Absolutely, I don't think that would be a poor idea at all. My hesitation on blanketly joining the Upper Valley Lake Sonicke Planning Commission is that, I mean, and I'm open to, uh, reasons, uh, from the board, from the public, on why we should or why I'm wrong, um, my tendency is that the, uh, it's not necessarily a one-size-fits-all, but we are, if, if we pay somebody to do a master plan for us, it's, if it's anything like the one from the eighties, it's very much something that was wrought for kind of like a one-size-fits-all town approach. It's a cookie cutter thing. I think that if we looked at our master plan and then looked at a couple of modern master plans, maybe from towns that, not that we necessarily aspire to be like, 'cause I don't think that we need to be ashamed of anything here, but, um, ones that we are inspired by, uh, and, uh, you know, towns that have some nice balance of community and sort of like individualistic spirit, um, if we could find master plans that are modern, by towns like that, we could use some, uh, inspiration from those and craft something that wasn't just like a one-size-fits-all thing. I would love to exhaust, I mean, Catherine brings up a good point, like, it's just kinda like one month rolls into the next, we're not doing anything, um.
What are we gonna copy? Where do we get a copy?
What's that?
Where do we get a copy?
Of the master plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um.
So what is it that we're relying, do we not, do we, do we not have a good understanding of the value of the master plan? How we can use it for the, you know, why it's needed or anything like that? Can we do some homework?
Absolutely, um, so for the, from a very like, functional legal standpoint, my understanding is that a master plan is part of the capital improvement fund system. Without a master plan, like, it's just a requisite part of the town for having, the, the, like, the capital improvement funds.
I have kind of the same basic understanding.
Yeah.
And, and essentially, you gotta be able to plan for the future, I mean, I can give you.
Right.
We, we've got some pretty, well, pretty serious issues in town, um, that have happened recently, that shouldn't be happening, I mean, we have a highway department that has deployable vehicles, and they're trying to get a vehicle at the same time that the ambulance is trying to get a vehicle, at the same time the fire department wants, you know, their stuff, and the police are trying to get a vehicle. You know, it's, hey, if you're popular, you'll get what you want in Grafton, um, but otherwise, you may not, you know, some planning and maybe a schedule that you can try and stick to, um, look, we don't need a cruiser, we only need a cruiser once every six years. So it needs to not land on the same year that we need a highway truck. And we keep our highway, look, the best sander that they have is a nineteen eighty-three.
That's a year I was born.
That, that's older than the master plan, okay? There, there is a problem there.
Well, the grader's from the seventies, right?
The, no, the grader's actually, I think, in the eighties as well.
Okay.
There were some big things that are just happening in the eighties, maybe that's why the master plan is. But it's quite, maybe, maybe we should, I, I think that that's a, a great direction to head in, is to figure out maybe pros and cons, why we need, why we need it, um, and just share them with each other next time.
Totally, so, um,
We have to look at scheduling more meetings.
We certainly could do that, it's gonna be a little bit hard for some of us, um. I'd be a little bit more inclined to do slightly longer meeting and have some email correspondence in between. That would be my tendency, because, I don't know, it doesn't sound like much, but even just one night a month with all the other things, it really is, uh, it's a thing with. Yeah, with little kids.
I can bury you in the master plan, as long as I'm sitting next to my wife, I won't get in trouble. I understand.
The, the master plan is really interesting, it's like a hundred pages or something, and. Yeah, yeah. It, it's, there's a lot of like, uh, ser, town survey style questions, which, um, it basically like, I mean, it's not, uh, it's not like you're voting, but you kind of are, and, um, it would be a really, uh, big undertaking to try to get, uh, get the work out well enough that we actually could be confident in the survey results being a representative selection, uh, you know, like, I don't know, when, when people vote, it's like, you know, half the people who are registered to vote, which is like half of the people who live here, so you're really like getting like a quarter of the people voting, and so you don't really know what the other three quarters are thinking, and that's like, too bad, but, you know, you have to show up, but with, um, with a master plan, it's like, there's nothing, we're not electing people, we're simply trying to get an idea of what people actually like, what their values are.
Well, I think that's why people elected us, right? To, to be here, so that they, we can, everybody over Grafton Pond says, hey, I'm gonna have Angus go to the meeting, he's gonna represent us.
That's, yeah, yeah.
See what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, right, if it's, if everything is direct democracy, nothing could ever get done, because it would just be too complicated.
Right.
To, totally, um, I do think that the master plan requires some level of broader population survey. Doesn't have to be super complex, and it's interesting questions like how much, how many people value farms? How many people value, uh, like a strip mall? How many people value this, like, like, what, do, do you like agree, somewhat agree, strongly agree, you know, disagree, all those things, for like, basic, um, like, do you believe in zoning, like, do you, uh, uh, things like that? And people answer, and, you know, I think, uh, if we wanted the, if we wanted to be an accurate representation, you just wanna try to make it very, very obviously available. And also, I think that it would be wise to account for who has answered, so that somebody who really wants something a certain way doesn't cap, doesn't put sixty things in, 'cause like, if only a hundred people respond, it's like, you can, you can screw with that pretty bad, um, so.
So we could do mailings?
I don't know what the right thing would be, um.
To, do mailings to all registered voters, that'd be one way to keep track of who's responding?
Right, I don't think you need to be a registered voter, um.
Well, it would, it would be a place to start.
Right.
I mean, it's a list of, of citizens that we have.
Right, a townwide mailing would be, I mean, we can do that, uh, I can't remember how much it is, I don't know if it's gone up, it used to be a hundred and twenty. How much?
One forty.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not much more than it ever was, and, um, I mean, we could see what the results were like, we, I don't think we could necessarily justify providing return postage, but, um, for an unknown number of people, I don't know how that works, but we could at least figure out, at, at that point, we, uh, the way it was set up, we could ask people to fill out their names and we knew who did respond, and, um.
It, it just sounds like something similar with the library, didn't you?
Yes, yes.
And they have like a hundred people that respond back.
Yep.
I mean, we were, I think it's, that's a lot of effort, that's a lot of work. Um, and you never, you're never gonna get any work done if you're relying on something like that, um. So, I fall back on what I said before, which is, you're elected, you don't hang out with anybody I hang out with. You have your own fifty people.
Totally.
She doesn't hang out with anybody that I hang out with, she has her own fifty people, for, for real. All four of us at this table represent potentially two hundred people.
Totally.
That's more than the results of any survey that you ever get. And then you, you know, and try, trying to decide whether or not somebody turned in forty-six of them, you know, you can't get around that stuff.
Okay, so this huge book that has the subdivision, um, the state subdivision stuff, I couldn't, i- if, if nobody had ever pointed us to six seventy-six, comma, four, we would all just look at that book and be like, uh, and it would just be, nothing would happen. And I feel exactly the same way about our subdivision regs, and even more so about our master plan. Subdivision regs are forty pages long, master plan's like a hundred and eighty. Like, if you're at all interested in this stuff, how are you possibly gonna even bother? No one wants to read a hundred and eighty-page thing, like, I, what I've kind of been saying, and this goes very much hand-in-hand with your suggestion of, uh, being representative in, in how we approach this, is, I'd love to see the subdivision regulations be six pages, I'd love to see the master plan be about twelve, and if, if those were the size of those documents, people would actually read them, and it wouldn't be intimidating, and if you can actually read it and you actually absorb it, like, you go four pages into the hundred and eighty pager and like, you haven't gotten anything, so why even bother continuing? So, maybe that's the right way to do it.
We've got to step somewhere, though.
We, we certainly do. I may have brought this up at one point, there's a, um, there's a municipal lawyer lives in Lebanon, he lives in Hanover, he maybe works, his office is in Lebanon, Bernie Wath, um, he's done a lot of writing about, for, for the state, and one of my favorite articles, which I read by him, I think he published in the early nineties, was about town meeting and how to not be afraid of it, and how, uh, to, most particularly, or most relevant to this conversation, is to not be intimidated by lawyers, and I'm not talking about a lawyer like waving something in your face saying, if you don't do this, you're gonna get sued, it's more just lawyers saying, you can't, as a regular, non-legal person, you can't write this stuff and have it count. And the answer is, coming from a lawyer, yes, you can. Like, there are plenty of examples, um, where when the intent is clear, it doesn't have to be legalese to fly, and, um, that's something that I feel like is, uh, if we really wanted to step out on a sturdy limb, that would be, uh, something to keep in mind, is that if we are clear and concise, we don't need to have it be an epic legalese kind of thing. It still, it still counts, um, so, uh. Yeah, okay.
So, I will try to educate myself.
Yeah, do a little of that.
About that as well, um, and maybe I can bring something to the table next time.
What I've kept threatening to do is whittle down the subdivision regs to a point where you can just look at it, read it in five minutes, be done with it, understand it, and it's clear what you can do, it's clear what you can't, and you don't have to wade through a whole lot of like crazy legal definitions and things.
Yeah, and I think a way to get to that would probably be like assigning a section to each of us.
Totally.
I mean, that's probably where we should start.
Yeah, yeah, okay, um, well, um, does anyone wanna dive into this at all right now, or do you wanna?
I feel like Sabrina should be there for it.
Okay, um, yeah, she's got a lot to, of valuable stuff to contribute, so, um. Rich, how do you feel about all this?
Whoa, a lot of grass from the wrong person.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what to think. I do, I hear a lot of discussion about all these things that the town needs, like, you know, emergency vehicles and all that, and I, I keep thinking right now, if the town would somehow come up with an alternative to the public school system, the, the Massoma, uh, Public School District, that's taking the majority of people's taxes, and the results are not looking good.
I think the value of our kids going to public school far outweighs the benefits when we gain from not paying for it.
Well, that's what most people think, and that's what happens by the time they graduate from high school, is they think that the government is the answer.
We are the government. The government is not an abstract entity, this is it, we're in New England, this is the government.
Okay, but it's taking people's money to the point where they can't keep up with the property tax, and where the town can't keep up with the emergency vehicles and road vehicles and, you know, things that we actually need.
I don't know if there's a right answer to any of this, because things cost money, the economy needs us to all be involved for it to succeed, it's complicated, everyone's got a different standard of living, um. I, I think.
And that's why they should be kept out of the public school system.
I'm sure, what?
The public fool, the public school system is not about education, it's about indoctrination. Huh?
I just wanted to know if you were saying fool or school.
Hmm. It's not much difference, really, I mean, there's a huge difference between schooling and education.
Was this the agenda?
Yeah.
Is there anything else on that?
No.
I would have asked.
No, no, Rich, thank you for sharing, um, we're happy to hear what you have to say, uh, that's great.
And thank you for the, uh, opportunity.
You bet, Jake, what's up?
Um, yeah, I'm all for, uh, making the simplified regulation, the subdivision regulations, um, but in regarding to the master plan, given that, uh, I, I think a question I'd like to ask is, if you see a need in changing or updating or anything, um, given that nobody even reads it or knows what's in it, what is that need, or what is, what has happened? What would you like to see different in that plan?
Half of the stuff in it doesn't even pertain to Grafton.
Exactly, so.
Exactly, so we'd like to make it more concise.
So is it just like taking it out, or?
Yeah, removing things that are not applicable to us, making it.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think that it's outside the realm of reasonable to try to set it up in a way that is compatible with the modern world, too, I mean, there's some weird stuff in there, like, uh, that I don't know exactly what they were trying to do, I don't really know what the intention was, but like, one of the last things in the old master plan is a mission statement, which I'm gonna get this wrong, but it basically says something about like, Grafton is a place that is free of this such-and-such tension, and, and like, free of racial tension and free of, and it's like, it's, it's kinda hard to know exactly what they really thought, but thinking back, like, it sounds to me like they were just like happy to say that Grafton is all white, and it, and whether that's true or not, it's just like, it would be nice to keep up with the times and try to, try to not be tongue deaf. I don't know, just another opportunity to try to like, be realistic about really being, uh, considerate of anybody, something like that.
So what, what would be your intention, what is your, your view, what would you like to see in it? And not what it should not be?
Sure, um, I like the idea of it being a boiled-down description of what the people in town value, and, um, the, that's where the whole survey thing comes in, um, but I, I don't, I don't really know, and that's why we have to, you know, I think a lot of this is gonna come down to like, having some sort of draft or some sort of brainstorming session, there's no way to get it right the first time, and, I mean, these things take a lot of work, and they also legally require, I think, at least two public hearings, um. So, so it would be a thing, you know, we, we'd have to get our act together, get it in a way that the public could deal with, so that there wouldn't be a bunch of people saying this is garbage, um, and, um, yeah, at, at, at the very beginning, it, it's something that is legally required for the town to have, and, um, the current one, so old and so big that it is, as far as I'm concerned, quite meaningless. I'd like to try to, try to do a little better.
What, what is, what would be the new one, what is the meaning, what is the, what are you going after?
Uh, I'd have to look at some other towns, um, and see what they have to say, and I'm sure there's things that will strike us as relevant and viable to include, and other things that are clear things that we'd like to avoid, um.
And there's something specifically that, at the moment, we want to see in it, or don't want to see in it, I mean, it's gonna be going over the entire.
Let me, yeah, no, sorry, um, let me, let me make something clear, which I do know, which can maybe set your mind at ease. The master plan, despite what it sounds like, it is absolutely not a regulatory document.
I, I understand.
Okay, it, it, it's not telling anybody to do anything, it's not forcing anything on anybody, it's simply a, um, a collective mission statement. Yeah, it's, it's something like that, and it's like a, um.
It's sort of like, where would you like to be in ten years?
Yeah.
Or thirty-six years.
Would you like to have, would you like to have transportation coming into town, bus transportation? Do you want a swimming pool, um, you know, things like that, where, how would you like to see the town develop? Do you want a swimming pool, um, you know, things like that, where, how would you like to see the town evolve?
As, as you, as you mentioned, a lot of the planning board does not even pertain to Crafton. So it's a puzzle about that back then, they just went to other towns and made it kinda like broad copy paste, too. So, it, going to other towns and seeing what they're doing, um, it, it's been suggested on, on, on a number of ordinances and other enforcement and stuff like that. Does it really matter what other towns are doing if, if people in Crafton are not asking for any changes? Not to say that they're good or bad, I think if there's no demand and there's no clear intent on what you're pursuing, so what is the point?
Yeah. Sure, it, it's certainly where the survey comes in, as far as actually getting an accurate representation. The other thing is that, I mean, I'd like to hear what everyone has to say, and that we can make our decisions based off of that, um. I, I think it, it would be equally valuable to look at something that like Lebanon has, and also something that like, some town like Dorchester that makes Crafton look like a big city has, you know, and it's like, you know, there, there's a wide spectrum, and there's all, you know, there's, um, I, I, I think this comes back to my, my hope that we can look at things, learn things, discuss things, and not commit to them simply because we talked about them. Like, we, we could talk about zoning and all the valuable things that it offers and still say no thanks. And that's a really valuable thing to be able to do. Yeah.
Has, has anyone come to the board and asked for any changes to the master plan? Or is this an initiative you're taking on?
Uh, this is initiative because it is an expectation of, um, what the plant, it's one of the purposes of the planning board, as, as described in various state laws. And, I mean, I think that it's our duty to consider it and update it, and honestly, if we said, we, if, if our end master plan simply said, we think the master plan is silly, but we have to have it, so this is, this is a one-page document saying that, and then that, and that, I don't wanna do that, but that could lie somewhere on the spectrum of what we'd accomplish, to satisfy state law and to make sure that we were doing what we were expected, so. Right, thanks for, thanks for contributing. No, let's do it, any seconds?
One second.
All in favor? I, thank you, everyone.